The Council did meet in closed session this evening, and it is our practice to always complete our closed sessions by 7:00 o'clock. Due to the press of business items this evening, we were unable to do so, so on behalf of the Council, I want to apologize to members of the public who were here at 7:00 o'clock. But we met in closed session for the purpose of conferring with our legal counsel regarding one item of existing litigations, EPA versus RJJ Resource Management, City and the Port, to consider two matters of approval to initiate or intervene in an action in which no action was taken, and to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with local 522, the West Sacramento Firefighters Association, the Police Officers Association, and the Police Management Association, and for public employment, City Manager, and no action was taken. All right, with that, we're going to proceed to our regular agenda, Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, the Council's prohibited by state law from taking action on items under Item 1A or from having a conversation about them, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the Council on Item 1A or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the City Clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets the chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the Council is currently considering. The clerk accepts the speaking request cards all the way through the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item, so if you're here to speak on Item 12 or any other item, please be sure to get the card in before the conclusion of the staff report. Once the public comment and the Council discussion have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. And finally, we know that for some folks speaking in public and on TV and in front of millions of people can cause some anxiety and stress, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls, or even applause or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have one request to speak under Item 1A, and it's by Edward Castorito. Oh, I'm sorry, I called you 11 items early. We're not there yet. Soon. All right, so we have no requests under Item 1A, so we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West SAC Area Flood Control Agency met on January 18th, and we held a public hearing on imminent domain action to acquire 1.7 acre, size acre property for levy improvement purposes. We also heard that the mayor was traveling to DC the week following our meeting and would be meeting with federal staff to advocate for funding and support of our levy project. The Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency Working Group met on February 7th. The agency received a million dollar grant for its groundwater sustainability grant, groundwater sustainability plan, and we outlined the work plan for plan development. We also heard from SACOG about its regional hydrological assessment and recharge suitability model that is working to increase and support groundwater recharge. Finally, the Port Commission met earlier tonight, and we authorized the sale of a remnant property. We provided input on an amendment to the Stone Lock Development Agreement with the city, and we also authorized the port CEO to modify an existing irrevocable offer of dedication for property related to the Barge Canal Trail Project. That's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, Regional Sanitation Board met, and we discussed a variety of things, among which was the branding of a new program called Confluence, a regional partnership program between Regional Sanitation and the Sacramento Area Sewer District. This program's funded by non-rate, non-fee revenue, and it's directed to the boards to fund certain projects that further the goals of SASD and Regional San, including the sewer lifeline program, other economic development, public education, and cleanup efforts, including the American River Parkway cleanup that many of us know about, as well as in Yolo County, $25,000 to support cleanup and removal of abandoned boats and vessels in the Sacramento River, a program that many of us know was championed by our supervisor, Oscar Villegas. We also authorized a district engineer to extend the board's agreements with the powerhouse science center for exhibit sponsorships, as well as additional public outreach and educational services throughout the region. As many of us know, the center has been, well, the building has been vacant for about 60 years, and so we're really excited to see that a new center is going in and hope to become an incredible hub that invites a curiosity and wonder of local children. And I was there to remind them that to reach out to Washington Unified School District does the most, I guess, the science center that is closest to us is on Auburn Boulevard, and that's the one that Yolo County residents and West Sacramento residents are encouraged to use. However, with the new center opening, it'd be a fantastic opportunity for many local kids, especially given its proximity. On January 31st, I paid a visit to observe a program out of Sacramento called the Downtown Streets Team, a program that I'd mentioned in previous Council meetings. Sacramento began a pilot project in January, and in its few weeks in operation, it has become an incredible success, was actually featured last night on CBS News. The pilot being so successful, it's already recruited 25 members who are working to actively clean up trash and debris left in homeless encampments and near the cold winter shelter in Sacramento. It has a waiting list of 15 active people, and to date has collected in the last four weeks, each week 300, excuse me, 3,000 gallons of debris. This is a fantastic opportunity for Sacramento, and I hope in the future, West Sacramento. Finally, announcements, I want to announce to the community that the West SAC Little League Field Community Cleanup, excuse me, West SAC Little League Field Cleanup Day is this Saturday, February 17th, at 8:30 a.m. If you're interested in participating, please go to Memorial Park and bring your wheelbarrows, shovels, rakes, gloves, garden hose, and your drinking water. Many of the teams will be deployed to Alice Norman to clean up that area, and if you're interested in what kind of work, laying sod, moving dirt, and making baselines for T-ball, and I know in recent weeks, Memorial Park has been in headlines, and many people have been interested, so I encourage everybody to go out and show their interest by helping us prepare that park for our Little Leaguers. Lastly, I do report to the Yolo County Children's Alliance. We didn't have a meeting, but I wanted to announce that the YCCA Annual Spring Event is upcoming on May 6th, and it will take place here in the Yolo County Galleria downstairs from 6:00 to 10:00, and you can buy your tickets at yolokids.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pratim Ledesma.
Thank you. Just past Monday, attended the monthly meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District. It was a light agenda, and we're going to be hearing from our friends there in just a minute, but we did, on that night, approve the short-range transit plan, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff while they're here. That's a lot of coordination with SACOG and others to put that plan together. We first heard it in January, and in the workshop, and we're able to approve it this month, so congratulations to their work, and we're looking forward to hearing from you on the other items that are next on the agenda. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. And let me also note, Councilmember Johannesen is away on business this evening, and also to, just to note, I forgot to do so when we reported out from closed session, that our closed-session meeting tonight was held pursuant to the special meeting agenda that noted that Mr. Johannesen would be conducting a portion of the meeting remotely and not the regular agenda that had been previously posted. The contents of the agenda items were similar. So I have a few reports to make. First, as Councilmember Sandin mentioned, I was in Washington DC in the latter part of January for the annual meeting, the annual winter meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where I conducted sessions with, on education and workforce development, and my capacity is chair of the Education and Workforce Committee for the Conference of Mayors, and also as part of a new task force on automation and artificial intelligence, which is an area I know, that the Council knows we're dealing with in the committee that I chair, but also the task force is looking at issues beyond just the workforce implications of automation and artificial intelligence, but also in terms of issues around just the city as an operator of services and opportunities, but also challenges from those two trends that are well underway and inevitable into the future, how we might respond, but also what, how we might identify areas that could be positive out of those changes, to the extent that folks have additional free time to participate and to engage in their community. So this was the very first meeting of the task force that's being chaired by the mayor of South Bend, Indiana, but I think it's a really critical topic for the country, but especially for cities like ours. Also met, the West Coast mayors met at the same session, and we conferred with the Interagency Council on Homelessness, the federal agency that coordinates homelessness efforts by, across the federal government, as well as some of the senior leadership at HUD, and raised continuing concerns around the requirements that virtually all federal housing programs have that preclude us from providing priority to West Sacramento residents or folks who have been, are homeless but were West Sacramento residents, and most federal programs preclude us from providing priority to them, even in homelessness and housing programs for which we are the primary funder. And so was asking for some relief from HUD. They were interested in the issue as a potential streamlining effort to try to support local governments that want to do more in the housing and homelessness space but are concerned that as they, as they build, that they will not be able to serve the very real needs that are in their own communities. We also met on sanctuary cities and DACA in terms of closer coordination among both police departments, but also among the mayor's offices around rapid response on both issues. Just for context, we were there on Thursday, and that's the day that we arrived, the White House, through the Justice Department, issued a letter that got a fair amount of national attention demanding that a group of cities and counties across the country immediately respond with information around their practices on sanctuary and immigration issues or else face subpoenas. It wasn't exactly the warmest welcome to the White House. I declined to go to the White House myself, but the need for us to up our game beyond simply the public statements about, around the protection of immigrants and the policies that are now ingrained across all of California as a result of SB 54, the need for closer coordination at the city level to assure full and adequate protection of our residents, this is definitely a key topic for mayors across, across the entire West Coast, not just California. For whatever reason, I also was invited to join the Big Ten, or now the Big 11.1 mayors in California, that's the mayors of the 11 largest cities in the state, plus West Sacramento, which I think for reference is something like 97. And our principal focus in that, in that meeting was to identify areas where, in the legislature, where we might, building off of last year's housing package, get substantially more resources in the pipeline from the state for affordable housing in particular, and for transportation as well. So those were the two key priorities, and we'll move forward with a fairly aggressive legislative agenda in that space as well, but entirely consistent with the Council's already supported in terms of trying to replace some of the revenues that were there before the elimination of redevelopment, or at least their equivalent at that scale to support affordable housing development in particular. I was also re-elected as the Vice President of Democratic Mayors of the U.S., brought our new president, is the mayor of Denver, Colorado. We also, while we were there, met with the Corps of Engineers twice, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Director of Civil Works, who oversees everything that we work on in terms of both the port and our levy program, our billion-dollar levy program, and also with the head of the South Pacific Region that oversees our projects specifically. It was extremely fortuitous that we were there, that, not just that week, and not even that day, but that hour. The folks inside the Corps that are responsible for preparing the work plan for the Corps, if and when the appropriations bill passes, Councilmember Sandin knows, but Council will recall that, that once Congress makes an appropriation for water, then the Corps is given an allocation to work based on, based on a work plan that the Corps then submits to the Office of Management and Budget. And they're not, they don't submit that work plan until after the appropriation is done, but it's not as though the appropriation happens and then suddenly that day they begin work on it. So the draft, at least the latest draft, was being prepared that day that I arrived, and when we met with the Corps staff, they were a little bit reluctant to meet with us because they're, they were worried that they were about to have to tell me that we weren't going to be in the work plan because our benefit cost ratio had, as the Council knows, had been revised downward last year because of some changes to the methodology, to the assumptions, and particularly to the, essentially the discount rate assumptions in the BCR. So that occurred last year. Our staff has been working mightily ever since on a variety of solutions to get the BCR back up because the BCR was, had gone down to a level which would make it highly unlikely that we would get in the work plan or get future appropriations for the project itself. So when I told the staffer at the Corps, the director at the division level, that actually we had just received approval for the new benefit cost ratio, and that we were now above 2.0 and fully eligible for that work plan, he said, "I'm so glad you came today, and it looked, you look, now you look good for the work plan and for the, for at least our recommendation for the President's budget for fiscal year 19." So it was a quick 35-minute meeting, but one of the, certainly the most important meeting of 2018 so far in terms of progress on that, and really glad that we happened to be there at the, at the critical moment to, to make sure that we did not fall through the cracks. Because if we don't, if we're not in the work plan or the budget for a whole year, it makes it very, very difficult to dig back out. You kind of need to be always in the mix in order to stay in the mix for the next, for the next funding round. So hugely positive. Okay, separately, last week, the, my deputy, Ian Winbach, the home run manager, and I were both in Kuala Lumpur, Asia for the World Urban Forum at the invitation of Next City. The World Urban Forum is hosted by the United Nations, but it brings together countries from throughout, throughout the world who've been working for the implementation of the new round of Sustainable Development Goals. The last round of the equivalent goals has been a contributor to the pretty major reduction in world, global poverty over the last several years, but also with, now with a focus in the climate change sphere as well. We were asked to come and present on, on the West Sacramento Home Run, also on the West Sacramento story overall, and the West Sacramento and regional and statewide work on cap and trade, climate emissions, and its relationship to affordable housing and social equity that we are doing. And as, as we presented the story on, literally it's called the world stage, you're flying there, you wonder why us, why is our little city of 55,000 people being asked to be an exemplar for the whole country? But as you tell the story with the pictures in the background of what's being accomplished here and some of the numbers, it actually becomes quite obvious why, why, why we were asked to show for smaller cities around Africa and Latin America and elsewhere in the world that it is possible to make big transformative changes, and especially in the area of workforce and education where most cities are wanting to do a lot but are actually doing very little. So this was an important, it was a really important showcase for us. Obviously, we were also there in part to try to inspire some potential funders to give us even more money to deepen the West Sacramento Home Run and support its, its impact. So, and we were extraordinarily well-received as well, and the podcast is available from that, from that session as well. And back at home, SACOG is, the Transportation Committee met earlier this, this month, and the Board meets tomorrow, and two key, two items that are relevant to the Council in particular, one is the Board is expected to grant approval for the scope change for the riverfront and Third Street project that SACOG had given us a grant for. The Council has previously approved some scope changes to it, and that should be approved by the Board tomorrow, except the SACOG's grant money. And then second, we also applied for some funding for West Capital improvements and rehabilitation through the state's, the SB 1 congested corridors program. It's unlikely that that will, it's not recommended by staff for tomorrow. We're not particularly competitive in the criteria for that program, so we, we're not likely to get those dollars, but it is good to get the project in starting, once, once you get it in, you just keep applying over and over and over again, and eventually hit the right, the right funding program to support it. So although it would have been nice to get the money this round, it's still an important, important move on the project. Finally, the Bike Share Steering Committee met last week, I think the beginning of last week, to continue the work on progress, so that we're preparing for the launch. The Bike Share Committee is working on the various policies around station locations. I've been, I've been pushing very hard that we, we need to have essentially turnkey, by right, station development. If we, if the city and a development project are going to assume, you know, bike share usage, we ought to be able to put that into, and the developer pays for it, whether they, if they choose to pay for it at a mixed-use project that meets the basic criteria for bike share, that we ought to simply be able to determine as the city that that will happen. And under the way that this, the program is structured today, we're able to ask the Bike Share Company, JUMP, to do it, but this is a public-private partnership, and it's really important for just the speed and the efficiency of our development process to be able to, for us to be able to assume, and we're issuing permits, and for project developers when they're applying and building, to have that as a, as automatic. So we're, we're pushing hard on that. The one area I would just highlight as a potential, it's not a problem, but the, you may have read that the city of Sacramento is considering an ordinance on bike share, and it's problematic on a couple of scores, so it purports to limit the speeds of bike share bikes to 15 miles an hour as a, as a hardware or software limitation, not, not a speed limit like a rider cannot go over 15 miles an hour, but to actually prohibit bike shares, bike share bikes from going faster than that. That might be a reasonable proposal. It might not be, right? The Davis, the Bike Share Pilot is, the Bike Share system is Davis, West Sacramento, and the center part of Sacramento, and it's quite conceivable that you would want to use a bike share bike, since it's electric assist, to cross the causeway, for example. And, and if you're doing that, going, and the bike can go 25 miles an hour, going at 15 is an unnecessary limitation. And there are other portions of the system, Freeport Boulevard being another, but others, where, where you might imagine a different speed, where it's, where it's actually less safe to be going slower than the flow, than the flow of traffic in the bike lane. But more fundamentally, I guess the concern I would just highlight, and we're working, the city of Davis and I are working on this, is there was no consultation with either the other two cities, and, and this is a joint project of the three cities, so I kind of, in my way, hinted that we might adopt a, a speed minimum of 16 miles an hour, see what happens, but we just need to set the right ground rules for how, okay, this is a joint project, none of us can just unilaterally pass a law that changes the operating conditions and the revenue model and everything else for the entire system. So we are, Davis shares the same concern, and we are working on that together.
Mr. Mayor, we did have a Smart Cities readiness event or gathering here, so I didn't know, I don't have all my notes, but I didn't know if you wanted to mention that. I know it comes up, I think, during our agenda.
Yes, we have a complete agenda item on it, so just, but it's appropriate to know we did have a special meeting of the City Council, notices a special meeting, it was not a formal meeting in any way, but subject to the Brown Act, we did have a formally noted special meeting yesterday at which three of us were present, and that will be the subject of Agenda Item 20? Yeah, 20. So thank you, Councilmember Sandin. All right, so we've no appointments to Boards and Commissions. I would ask, under, just under this item, to the City Manager, if you might ask your department leaders to, there are a couple of consent items I want to make a point on, but many, many, many Commission meetings have been canceled, and in fact, yesterday, our intention was, at the Smart Cities briefing, at the Smart Cities meeting, to have the current, the new chairs and vice chairs of all the Commissions present, or at least invited, but most of the Commissions have, had had their January and February and December meetings canceled, so we're unable to elect any chairs or vice chair. And if, as we'll go through the agenda tonight, there are plenty of items to be considered by these, by these Commissions, a lot of them with a fair amount of complexity in that require, you know, whether it's broadband or, or energy pricing or what have you, so I just, just to take a look at the, at the frequency with which we are canceling the regular meetings of those Commissions, partly because we need their input and their good judgment and advice, and partly because we, we've asked busy people in the city to sign up for these Commissions, and, and they need to be real, frank, just to be, just to be frank, and they need, they need to be part of the process all the way through, so we have an agenda item later, I'm not going to, no, but it says that the Commission, the Commission reviewed this and recommended this to us in 2014, and we should be getting fresher, they should, they should be consulted, you know, at some point in intervening four years between the items, so appreciate it. Okay, that brings us then to Item 2, which is a presentation by the Yolo County Transportation District on the Countywide Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Ledesma, our Mayor Pratim Ledesma, did you want to introduce this item?
Wasn't planning on that. Yes, I will. So for the past few months, the Yolo County Transportation District staff and leadership have been working with the county and the, and the four cities throughout Yolo County on a countywide project to really look at the county for, in a different way, to provide a countywide transportation improvement district and what that might look like. It bears noting that this is an important endeavor from, from their staff level side for a number of reasons. One, to get this county kind of together on the same page and kind of addressing an important issue for the county around transportation, transportation in the county is important, and having an improvement plan around that is important as a way, a mechanism to find funding, and mechanism to address issues and consolidate those issues, and having a plan together. So from a staff level and how they, how they pursued it, they did a terrific job of gathering the various counties, where I know they work with the, the management teams from throughout, and the District Board was engaged, and so it was ambitious to kind of get everybody on the same page, working towards an approach, and which is the second point, which you'll hear about tonight, which is the approach they came up with. Finding an approach in such a diverse county is difficult, to say the least, and I think their staff was more than up for the challenge to find a way to cohesively stitch together the county needs and be able to present them so that the county could have a higher level view of what needs to happen from a transportation perspective and where the needs are. I want to thank them for working with our city staff. I know our city staff contributed part, part of it. As we move into the plan, you'll see where we are, well, our needs are well articulated, and some challenges in the county are well articulated, and this leaves a lot more, it brings a lot of clarity to those kind of issues, but it also raises some questions, and I think we're going to hit those head-on, starting today, what those might be, and specifically around funding. And I think city, I'm sorry, the county, District staff is well-prepared for that. They know that working with the four cities and the county is diverse in a number of ways, including how we approach these things in, in each of our respective cities, and when you talk about funding for these and how we're going to fund projects and how they might work, interact with what cities like our own have already implemented, will be the challenge. But we're not going to shy away from the discussion, even if we may disagree as a city and county, I think it's important we have the discussion, and so that we know where we, where we stand and what options there are. So I'm very pleased that they're, they're here today. I know they put a lot of work into this plan, and I'm looking forward to starting the discussion. I think you've met with already one jurisdiction, I believe, two, I think, two jurisdictions, so we're third up. So appreciate Terry being here again. You've been here quite a bit the last couple of years for all of our transit needs, and Mike, of course, returning back to, to our city, always a pleasure to see you here. So with that, I'll let you go forward.
Mayor, Council, Gary had prepared to do the introduction. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think he did a good job.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the West Sacramento City Council, Terry Bassett, Executive Director of the Yolo County Transportation District. Before Mike does the presentation, I do want to make mention that today we just took delivery of our first, next batch of Gilleg buses that are, that are CNG. So we're going to have another eight of them coming in, and we will be doing what we did last year and have a bus naming contest, which was a huge hit amongst the kids, so I just want to throw that out there. My only comment I'd like to make tonight is to just point out that promulgating a transportation plan is within the authority of the District, it's in the enabling legislation, and this is a voluntary effort that we're trying to do, you know, cooperatively with the four cities and the county, and the net product will be the result of how willingly are to work together to come up with a common approach to addressing the transportation needs as well as potentially the shortfalls. With that, I'll let Mike Lukin speak, and he's our Deputy Director of Operations Planning and Special Projects.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Teresa, if we could have the PowerPoint, and I hope I remember how to use the PowerPoint thing here. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. So, as, as Councilman and Terry explained, the, why we're here, I won't go through that again, but what I want to do tonight is just cover the contents of the plan and, and some discussion points for funding. And the purpose of us coming to you tonight is really to get feedback on the plan. As Terry stated, we've been to two city, two jurisdictions, we've been to the County Board Supervisors and the city of Winters, and then next week we're going to Woodland in the fall, or about two weeks later to the city of Davis, and then back to our, to our board for consideration of the plan. So, really, as, as stated, this is a capital improvement plan for the entire county, so it takes into account, really, the existing priorities of the city and the county. So, we didn't really come up with new priorities, but we did, what we did is catalog the existing ones. Certainly, we discussed some of those that have countywide significance, such as Yolo County Railroad Location Project, but most of these are, have already been vetted by each of the jurisdictions and the transit districts. This document, as, as directed by a subcommittee of two of our board members, Director Saylor and, and our Chairman Rodriguez, they, they wanted a document that was a 20-year document, so a 20-year projection of need and implementation, and implement, excuse, and implementation for transportation projects throughout the county. And really, they are capital projects, there are, there are no planning dollars, there are no services in there, it's strictly a capital plan. And so, our job was to quantify the priority projects for each region. We did that, and in summary, we came up with roughly about $2.34 billion worth of projects. So, and there's three numbers you'll see in this plan, and they're very important in terms of total costs, that's the 2.34 billion. We then subtracted the money that we've already set aside to those projects, so we, we netted that to 1.79 billion. And then, under the best-case scenario, if we applied all the local dollars we have towards transportation that are in place already, and we, we, on the best of years over an average 13-year time span, with Secog, we got a normal amount of funding each year. We are still left with the third number, which is in between 1.37 and 1.42 billion dollars of need over the next 20 years in terms of transportation projects. And this document was really to position, to help position the, the county as a self-help county, and, and not just strictly from a funding standpoint, but from a work, as was stated, a document that would allow us to work together to lobby for additional dollars being brought to the county to work together on, on joint projects. And this document was to assess the condition of that network. So, the document is broken down, goes through, why do we, why, where are people going to? Basically, where are people conducting their daily activities? Where are, are people recreating? Where are they being educated? Where are they shopping? Where are they going to the doctor? So, it really took, took a look at where are people going and the characteristics of that. We then moved into the, all the different types of modes of transportation, from, from standard roadways all the way to the port and to public transit and even emergency access and airport service. So, we took a look at all the different modes and all the different needs for those modes. We then, as directed by our subcommittee of our board, focused in really, as many of other transportation efforts at a state and federal level have done, is, is really focused in on the state of good repair. So, instead of, you, you won't see mostly new projects in this plan, these are projects which are fixing, mostly fixing what we have already. And so, we took a look at what is the pavement condition index for the county, we take a look at, and each jurisdiction, what is the fleet needs for public transit, what are the safety needs, where are those intersections that have the highest level of, of accident ratios, what are the railroad facilities that we have need? The one big new project in the plan, which was an exception of this, being the Yolo Regional Freight Rail Project, which has, of course, been before your board of late in the last few years, and then port facilities. So, what are the, what are the items that fit into the state of good repair? We then, one of the things, our mandates was to find a way for us to work together as a county, so where the county could work together with the cities. And what we did is we chose, and were, and were directed to, to look at corridors of importance in, in the county. So, we, as the, the technical advisory committee of, made up of the, of the public works officials and officials from our transit districts, along with the subcommittee, looked, took a look at creating 17 corridors where we can work together as a county. And those range, I won't go through every one of them, but they range from employment corridors to trade corridors to public health corridors. And where, where this comes into play is these are not constraints where only projects that are on these corridors can be considered as a priority of the plan, but they're really opportunities where we can work together. So, an example of that might be where, where the county has a project that benefits the Clarksburg vitricultural area along a road in, in south of the city of West Sacramento or State Route 84, well, there's an opportunity there where, where Caltrans and the county and the city could work together on that key agricultural corridor that connects our vitricultural area in Clarksburg. So, again, creating these opportunities to work together, and when we go for state and federal funding, we can say, hey, we're not just one jurisdiction, we're three or more jurisdictions that are working together on this project, and hopefully that gives us a better leg up to get funding. So, the, these are the 17 corridors, it's mapped countywide, it's quite a markup of our county map. We then took these into each community, and in the case of West Sacramento, you can see we, we brought, had to, for, just for mapping standpoint, break it into a northern half and southern half of the city, but you can see here where those corridors, whether it be the, the rice trade corridor that's coming from northern Yolo County and into the counties to the north of West Sacramento, the north of Yolo County, or some other type of corridor that connects emergency access or, or commute access between Woodland and, and West Sacramento, but showing those into each community, and then mapping each one of the priority projects, which we'll get into here in a second, on these maps, showing where those are located on those corridors. Again, showing areas of opportunity to work together. So, we went through a very lengthy exercise, as, as, as stated, on, on going through the priority projects for each community. And this is, this is a list, I don't expect you to be able to read this from the screen, it's in your document, but, but this is West Sacramento's list, which, which started out at about 1.1 billion dollars. And through that process of saying, how much money do we have aligned to those, how much money do we have dedicated? In the best-case scenario, we, we reduced that to, you know, a six to $700,000 range. But we did this for each one of the cities, the county unincorporated area, and the transit districts. And so, that's how we came up with a, we probably went through 27 versions of this spreadsheet to finally get to a number, or a, a, a good estimate of what our need is. And on this chart, you see items listed in red, those are our projects which each jurisdiction was asked to say, well, what are projects that are best represented in your community in terms of its need? To show the public, these are our premier projects that, that we're working on that are important to our citizens. So, here is just some graphic representation of that need, again, 2.34 billion project need by each jurisdiction. We have a wide range of types of projects across the board. So, there's, there's just a, you know, a plethora of different types of projects, from bridge projects, which we have some pretty high, high-ticket bridges, which, which, some of which are connecting the two cities of Sacramento and West Sacramento, and you've talked about quite a bit, but all the way down to road rehab, to, to transit, to, to active transportation projects, to show that there's a wide variety of projects in each different category. And this is just by percentage, showing that, that there's a wide variety in the plan, it's not just road rehab projects. And again, we subtract the, all the money that could possibly on the best day happen, and we still have a 1.37 billion dollar need over the, the next 20 years. So, then lastly, we, we wrapped up the plan with, well, what are existing funding programs, cataloging them, what do we have in place to, to address this need? And these are part of the things that subtracted to get us to that 1.37 to 1.42 billion dollar number. So, things such as development impact fees, traffic impact fees, to local measures such as West Sacramento's Measure E or Woodland's Measure F, SB 1, and, and the money that's made available to that, and then money in the transit arena from different sources. So, we cataloged all those that are available, they got, and got us to this net number. And then lastly, we, we took a look at, well, what are some ideas for funding for, to, to bridge this gap? And there, you know, unfortunately, there aren't a lot. There are, there are some things that have been, have been talked about, but, but not implemented or tried. One is a countywide development impact fee for roads, that's something that's been discussed probably for about the last 30 years. Problem with that is it only addresses really new development. So, we're left with, you know, a discussion, and, and we're basically throwing it out there in terms of, of, to be able to get input from each of those jurisdictions, but the plan takes a look at, you know, well, what, what if we were to pursue a countywide sales tax and to tap into the local partnership program, which is a program with SB 1 that gives jurisdictions that tax themselves for transportation, an additional amount of funding, in our case, about an additional $500,000 is estimated by, by CTC staff. With that, we could generate on a quarter cent sales tax, about eight and a half million dollars a year, and 2,015 dollars, a half cent sales tax up to 17 million dollars. And then what we did in the plan is, in the last pages of the plan, is we ran seven or eight different scenarios on how you might slice the pie, if you will, with different sales tax. And I won't go through each one of those, but, but they basically look at different criteria and, and weight different criteria, from road and lane miles to vehicle miles traveled, to the point of origin for that sales tax generation, and to population, and what are different ways that, that one might slice the, the pie if there was such a sales tax measure. And then there was one additional one, which, which your staff asked us to take a look at, and we, we did this run just today, so this is not in your packet. So, this is a, another idea, if you will, or way to, to slice the pie, which is if we got that local partnership program, and each one of the jurisdictions was to retain its sales tax that it generated with that quarter cent, and then that money where the, was, was dedicated to the county and to the city of Winters, which don't really have a, a viable supply of sales tax dollars for transportation, what would that leave? You know, what would that, how would that be shown, and how would, what would that leave in terms of sales tax dollars? So, again, this is just, again, another idea that we wanted to lay out before each one of the city councils and, and the board of supervisors for discussion and input. And, and really, at this point, we're, we're asking you for feedback on each one, on the plan in total, and then we'd love to get your impact on, on some of these different sales tax scenarios, and, and whether or not that that's something that's of interest to the city of West Sacramento or not. So, with that, I'll conclude my discussion, or my, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay. And let me just, first, Gary, did this, has this been to the Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission for briefing yet? I know you've, you've gone to councils, but, by your own staff?
It has not at this point.
So, can, I, I have a kind of a core methodology question first, which is, well, thanks, I know, thanks to Mr. Ledesma and, and to Mike and Terry and the team, this is a Herculean effort to try to put all of this together for very different cities, plus an even more different county. And the district, since the district's formation in whatever, 20 years ago? 20 years ago, I think I, I joined the district board right when it was formed. And this was, it's, you know, part of its intended purpose was to do this, this sort of comprehensive countywide planning and, and look at financing mechanisms, so, while still running Yolo Buds and all the other services that, that are so critical in our community. But just, and, and some of the issues I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask about right now, I have asked, I've raised for all 20 of those years, so they will be, I'm sure they will be of no surprise to either, either of you. But the, but the first one, and the most fundamental one, is all of the measures for funding, for how funding would be allocated, they're all rear-view mirror measures, every single one of them. There's not a single one that says, what is the projected development pattern in the county and in its jurisdictions? They're all, how many road, how many road miles are there today? How many vehicle miles are traveled today? What's the population today? But no, no jurisdiction that's growing spends all of its money solely looking backwards at solving today's problem and not anticipating the changes. And, and as you know, in the, in the, in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, West Sacramento is, is not just projected, expected to grow to, in the planning horizon of this document, to nearly 90,000 people. So, we have to have the transportation infrastructure in place to accommodate, accommodate in a fully livable way, you know, another, another 30,000 to 40,000 people in this community. And, and it wouldn't make that much of a difference if that was true across the whole county, but in the adoption of the blueprint, and a, a fundamental deal was struck, and it was absolutely, you know, in very real sense, a deal was, was, was made, that the states, the state, through the Rena process and other mechanisms, expects each jurisdiction to grow in proportion to the region's assigned growth targets. And so, Davis and Yolo County and Winters and West Sacramento, Woodland, we were all expected to grow by a certain amount each year in order to meet those targets. And the magic, one of the magic solutions of the blueprint was that West Sacramento agreed that we would take responsibility for the growth that Davis in particular did not want to have much of at all. And the county, for all the right reasons in both cases, the county did not want to have much growth at all, and, and Winters wanted to limit its amount, but the proportion's not large. And so, that, that land use plan that guides all investments in the region shifted all of their, almost all of their projected growth to us. And the, of course, we didn't simply offer to do that for, for free, the deal was, the contract was, that the transportation investments must match that. Not the transportation investments will follow, but they must match those growth projections because we have to have the roads, the streets, the bike lanes, the paths, the bridges, the transit to serve 30,000 to 40,000 more people, and Davis has to deal with less than 10,000 more. Right? So, the, that is not a metric at all in the plan in terms of considering how we might allocate money, and in my view, it should be the number one metric in, in the plan. So, that's sort of fundamental, whether, whether it was considered or not, I mean, both of the representatives on the subcommittee were not from fast-growing jurisdictions, so maybe not, but whether, whether the, whether this fundamental issue of growth, because it does drive other regional funding formulas, but those are not enough, right, to pay, to pay for the transportation that are, that are needed. This is, if this funding were solely for the restoration of a broken road system only, then you might, then there might be a reason not to consider growth principally, but it isn't that. The list, this list of projects in all jurisdictions is forward-looking, not backwards-only. In a related way, the road miles piece is a, and vehicle miles, vehicles miles traveled is a weird one to me, because we're, we're trying to have more trips taken not in vehicles, and so to be rewarding jurisdictions for having more car trips seems perverse in, to me, in, in a, in a pretty fundamental way. But the second is the road miles metric, because, and the road miles metric is essentially trying to get at, you know, how much does it cost Davis to, to maintain and repair and keep its roads in good condition, and how much does it cost West Sacramento? And so, if Davis has five miles of road and we have five miles of road, it should cost about the same, except that it doesn't, because the principal users of Davis's roads, and just to be, just to be snarky, are bicycles and Priuses. And one big rig going to the port full of, of rice or other cargo dramatically dwarfs the, a single occupancy vehicle or even a triple occupancy Prius, right? And so, it is the reason why the, the intensity of use of our roads, you know, this is the former director of the port, the intensity of use of West Sacramento's roads, at least in its industrial areas, is much more significant than it is in any of the other communities, but particularly in Davis and Winters, and even the frequency of use, because if you order something from Amazon, for example, in Davis, and it's delivered to you by FedEx or by UPS, it's coming from here. Or so, so even the trips to serve other communities in the county are, are in, in large part either originating here because of freight or because we're the, we're the, along with the University of California, primary job center. So, the road miles metric does not account in any way for goods movement, and the fact that we do, we cannot, we can't fix Harbor Boulevard or Industrial Boulevard and then wait another eight or nine or 10 years to do it again, or to do it all, it's like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. I mean, that, that road has to get redone all the time. And I, so I didn't see that metric in here either. So, the sales tax stuff aside, which I do want to get to, but just those two particular metrics seem to, seem to very, very much disadvantage the, the very real needs that we have in West Sacramento today and going forward, and maybe could that we have in West Sacramento today and going forward, and maybe we could address that.
Mr. Mayor, one of the, one of the, you know, as we present this to five different jurisdictions, um, we get comments all along the ways, and so we, we try to have the, almost the same presentation to everybody so we can get the same level of comments. But one of the comments we got, um, uh, from the public, actually, was, uh, a recommendation to use, um, existing and future mode split. Would that, is that maybe something along the lines of the blueprint, what you're...
Mode split probably wouldn't. Um, I mean, it might get at the VM, at the perverseness of VMT as the driver, but I don't think mode split, which is just a, is a, I mean, all of our mode splits add, in every city add up to 100%. So, um, that might heavily advantage our, our direct neighbor to the west, uh, with a, with a much more, went to a much better bus and bike, uh, mode split than us. But in terms of it, but I don't think it necessarily gets it at the other, at the, at the growth issue, or the, or the, or the industrial issue either, for that, for that matter.
But we, we have received some comments about the same, and also taken a look at, maybe looking at, um, uh, methodologies such as, uh, bike, bike, um, trail miles, or, uh, and not just what's here existing, but what is projected out in a document that everyone agrees to, like the blueprint. So it's not just today's bike miles, it's what do you expect 20 years from now in terms of bike miles? So maybe something along those lines.
Yeah. No, I think that would be help, it would be helpful. It's a good idea. It doesn't answer, uh, it doesn't really answer directly the concern that I have, but it is a good idea in itself. And the challenge with the blueprint is the blueprint was, the deal was, implementation of the deal was, once the blueprint's adopted, we adopted a general plan instead of specific plans. We, we've spent, you know, 15 years working on a streetcar project, 11 years working on two bridges. We, this is, this is not something that you, you change course on, or that you renegotiate. So it can't be the question that we need to now reach a new county agreement on what to do, what to do about growth going forward. We're already, we're locked in. And so are they, because they have not made their, they would not, they have not made what would have been their RENA allocations, um, in that regard. So it's, it's, it's a fun, this is a fundamental, almost religious issue at this point, because our, our, our future has already been staked on, on the implementation of that plan. The other implication of it, then, if I could switch to the sales tax piece, is that, um, in, in the period of this planning period, by the, certainly by the end of it, if not much, much before that, two-thirds of the sales tax revenue at least will be generated in West Sacramento.
Yeah.
So today, the figure in the document is 42%, but, uh, given that growth trajectory, at least two-thirds, maybe three-quarters, um, is likely to be generated in West Sacramento. And so it's, uh, all of the, all of the other factors that are being applied significantly underweight West Sacramento. They're all, they're all less than that figure right there. Um, and so, it, it, you know, just as a West Sacramento, I have to ask myself, okay, what, what would be a better idea, just to do our own sales tax, collect 100% of that seven, of that 42 or 65 or 75% sales tax revenue, collect 100% of that here and spend it on the billion dollars of need that, that you've identified, um, in our city? Or should Woodland and, Woodland, which has the same challenge, but in a much lower, in a much less order of magnitude? So under this plan, under, under a, a plan that's, that's, that's based on road miles and population and all of that, as a, as a environmental justice, social justice matter, what you have is the two cities with the poorest populations and the largest Latino populations transferring their money to the city that's the richest in the county, with the highest property valuation, into the county itself. Um, and I, 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 we will need to have a good explanation, both here locally and countywide, about how that is a, how that is a fair and equitable, or socially desirable outcome for that kind of an income transfer, um, to those other jurisdictions. So I, I was encouraged by what you presented at the end, in terms of what, what our staff or, or others might have suggested that you take a look at, in terms of, okay, if the goal here is to get to the state local partnership program by, by being declared a self-help county, that, that mechanism, I thought, had, had some promise. I'm, I'm still concerned about the, the large amount of it that's discretionary, so that we would be at the mercy of our, of our, of our sister jurisdictions around the, around the, around the, around the county. But if that was a, it was, it was a pretty good leap towards something that may, that seemed to work well. A lot of the, the scenarios that were in the document, at least for me, were not really, I mean, they were, in total, they were kind of, kind of dead on arrival. But the, the last one that you added in at least opens the door to, you know, a potential solution, so maybe Terry seems to be championing that.
Mr. Mayor, we had mixed feelings about even putting these scenarios in. They were trial balloons.
Do you want to, did you grab the mic? Because there's, we have a, we have a huge audience at home that's, uh...
Um, we had mixed feelings about even putting all those tables in because these were just trial balloons, and we're encouraged that this type of discussion's beginning to, to happen, because I'm sure there are better models that can be utilized that might gain more support, you know, perhaps even from the city council.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's, it's really been an, an exercise at this point of pure planning, right? And, and, and you've acknowledged the fact that this is a, this is a county where this process has been interesting for all the reasons you, you, you've articulated around, um, uh, the dynamics, socioeconomic dynamics of each city, and where, where the growth is projected to be, which has sort of been the calling card that at least we've tried to incorporate. So today's discussion, I kind of, while it's the end, maybe, I don't say the end milestone in terms of the planning document itself, so here's the plan, here's the projects, which everybody gave it to, and an approach to a way to look at the county to where it addresses core needs, right, from agricultural corridor to, and, uh, trade corridor, which are important viewpoints. And, and, but we haven't assigned any weighting to those one way or the other as a mechanism to say these are of import, because it will be hard, um, I've always had the, brought to this discussion the fact of how does this help us assist, abide by the, the blueprint? And it's, it's on the goals itself, on, um, on page 46, right? We kind of articulate the goal is to help implement the, the blueprint vision for all the reasons you've articulated, because we know that's where the growth is coming. It's why we have a nearly billion-dollar cost going in, because it is, you know, I don't want to say anybody suggested this, but the larger reason for the cost, it's bridges. And everybody that uses Yolo Bus today to come into, uh, to the workplace, the corridor coming to downtown, they all, I think, with a knowledge, we need more bridges. We need to get to the job corps, um, which is the, our downtown corps, which now includes us. So, um, I, I think this is a good point of reference to where the discussion amongst us, all of us family members in Yolo County, start to recognize on all the reasons the mayor has pointed out. This has to have that overlay, um, because, um, it is very much, well, we're all trying to identify the needs. I think we all recognize the challenges of this county. I don't, I don't, I don't want to dismiss that, the, the, the folks in that bring in the rice and the, and the agricultural needs that need those county roads to bring that to our port, so we can either export out or bring out, that we need as, as, as goods movement. Those are important. Um, but the mayor points out that there's still core fundamental issues that we have in this city that every county, uh, resident, whether they're in Davis, Woodland, Winters, will benefit from, and those have to be addressed for all the reasons you said. And, uh, so I, I'm, I'm, this is, was never dead on arrival for me. It was more gonna be a, uh, which is what it was, it's gonna be a little bit of slinging some arrows, but we need to do that, because I don't want to shy away from the conversation around the sales tax. We just passed quarter cent sales tax here in, in West Sacramento, and we just, we just allowed part of that funding to go toward DMI-G, which you acknowledged here. And we had, now we have SB one, which is augmenting our, our needs as in transportation dollars. But it doesn't nearly get us to where we need to be. And we're always fighting for funding for, um, for trans, uh, transportation needs. I mean, all the, all the items in our list, um, we, you know, the Broadway Bridge is the best example. Um, we have funding that gets to what we're design phase and, and feasibility and design phase. We still have a lot to do. We, we can talk about feasibility of the Enterprise Bridge. We can talk about, uh, you brought up Harbor, which is the most notable one in terms of good movement. Oh, those are all super important items that everybody would agree, would probably waited to help everybody, some sort of connection to how that would help, uh, residents across the county, um, on, on, on a number of different fronts. So, so we're gonna have to kind of stitch this together, and, and whether we agree at the end of the day, whether this is the sales tax, we can make it work. I think, I think what, what our staff has proposed is promising, because we are, it, it is. I know you just brought that to my attention on Monday. Um, and, uh, staff has kind of figured out, is there a way we can, mechanism that we can still address our needs, as well as give the help to our, our, um, uh, other parts of Yolo County, get to a place where they can find funding? Is, can we make that a win-win? It's a possibility, and then we just need to flush that out a little more and see what else we can do. But I think, again, I always look to today as the launchpad, and it's a little, I understand the concerns. I knew the mayor, um, he's, he's, I mean, um, he's been here for 20 years and was here when the blueprint was passed by this, and it, it was, it was a great deal, um, the regional, um, big deal in this, uh, new deal for the county and how we were gonna grow. And we've been on that trajectory, and I, and I fully support the, the premise of that, is that our transportation district and the way we've approached everything to this point is all around moving people and goods in a much more, which will be a much more, um, dense area as the growth comes here. And, uh, we, I support that, but I also, as a board member of the, of the, this transportation district, and knowing that those things are important too, willing to have the conversation, so if we can find a way to help that as well, without losing out on the growth that we are expecting, I'm, I'm gonna keep looking for an answer.
Hopefully. I mean, I, 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 I agree, and I think the process needs to, needs to continue. I, I think that sometimes, uh, people look at our, in the county, look at our sales taxes as like we're Roseville or Rockland, and, uh, therefore, we, we should just be sharing the sales taxes and, and what have you. We're just, we're just incredibly fortunate. Well, why do we have a larger sales tax base in these other cities? It isn't, it actually isn't IKEA, and, uh, which is what, you know, folks' first impression is. It's all the, it's mainly the industrial uses, you know this well, having been the port director. It's the industrial uses that those cities and the county did not want. It is the, it's the fuel tanks and the trucks, um, that, that mean that neighborhood air quality in, in various parts of our city is dramatically lower than it is in Davis and in Winters, or even parts of Woodland. I mean, we, our community has paid a severe price for the decisions made at the county before we even became a city, to make us an industrial sales tax, you know, uh, haven or what have you. And so, to, to, after all that's happened, and after we're now grappling with the, with the consequences of that, and the severe transportation costs of having to go over ship channels that are industrial, to go over rail lines, to do all that stuff, we have to make up for the lack of investment that happened in the county, and we've paid a public health and environmental cost to do that. And so that's, it's, it's one of the reasons, I'm just fiercely, you know, gonna defend not exporting our sales tax revenues to, to other jurisdictions, when it's clear that not only is all that true, but the needs going forward are even more asymmetric in terms of needing to make investments in the transportation system that we all agree to. Councilor Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I, I think it's really helpful to look at the whole system, um, and to, for the cataloging that, that you've done, and, um, the work of all the, all of your, um, board members. Um, and Mr. Ledesma, I know, has served for a long while on YCTD. So I, I think it's really helpful for us to have this, and it's actually staggering to see the need. For me, I, for me personally, with the sales tax, um, issue, because I think you, you only can do that so many times, um, before you don't, you've run out of, you can't go to 100%. I guess you could, but, you know, I mean, it's a real, it's a real, um, sensitive, and it can be called a regressive tax as well, so I, I, and, and we have needs, as have been articulated. So I just, I'm struggling a bit with trying to even contemplate, um, adding, adding that, um, although I know that that's one, one way to make this happen. So I, I, I think there's continuing to look at other options in, in lieu of, or, um, in lieu of a, a sales tax initiative would be kind of one, one other option. So I know, I think there's some, some of that in here, um, but I, I just really, I really am sensitive to adding, continuing to adding more tax again, given that we just did that, um, two years ago, and I know we have other pressures, um, as all of the municipalities in the county do. So it's just, I, I think it's a much longer conversation, um, not, not to disregard the need, and, um, I, I clearly, I, I know that the county, um, we have, our county roads, we do have, um, a big need, so I just think we need to try to figure out, I don't have the solution at my fingertips, but, um, try to figure out some other possibilities.
All right, to, uh, can I just pile on one more thing, just because the, the development impact fee is still in here with a hint that, that somebody might propose a countywide development impact fee, and it has the challenges that you mentioned in terms of new development. And just, since I'm here planting flags, just want to plant one on this one, um, that if there, if a countywide development impact fee were, transportation were imposed, and the funds, given the growth trajectory that's here, the vast, even the larger, even a larger share than the sales tax would be generated here in West Sacramento, if those funds were then spent outside of the road system that connects West Sacramento to the, to the, you know, to the, to farmland and to the, to Woodland and to Davis and to Clarksburg, um, I, I, personally, I would be prepared to, you know, to support joining a suit by, by, by builders against the fee. We fought very hard against that, as you know, you were part of that here, um, against, you know, the notion that our development would, uh, impact fees would then be transferred to some other area that's not legally supported by Nexus, um, in, you know, in other parts of the county. So there was a, it wasn't, it wasn't that it was put off earlier, and people said, hey, that's a great idea, but not right now. It was, that's a bad, that's, that is an idea that's not gonna work. Um, and so I, I, I totally support finding new, new alternatives. I'm, I don't think that's the one, though.
Okay. And there, there is no active pursuit of that. It's just one way you, you, that has been looked at before, that could, could potentially fund something, but it, it only looks at a very small portion of new development, so...
All right, well, uh, thank you. I mean, the tirade aside, that, I really, this, I mean, this is, it is really critical work, and especially, as, as everyone has said, the, uh, it, it, the county's road system is critical to us, um, and the rest of their transportation network. So it, um, finding solutions, and why the staff solution, the staff suggestion was, was so encouraging, is that that, without, without, without robbing, um, Peter to pay the county, uh, we would be able to get new money into the equation that would be, could be directed to, to solving a problem that, that is, that they have, but that has implications, and it's important to us to.
Thank you. These were exactly the kind of comments we were hoping to get from the council and, and bring back to our board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, Mr. Ledesma. All right, that then brings us to the consent agenda, and, uh, at our desk, council has a memo from the city manager regarding, um, modification to item nine, the staff recommendation, which, uh, is that we delegate authority to the manager to extricate contract amendment number one with a ECOM technical services for civil engineering services in the Pioneer Bluff and stone use, stem, stone lock reuse master plan. Um, and also, the city manager is requesting, um, that we continue item 16 to the March 21st meeting. So are there items on consent to remove or for separate comment?
Item 12, please.
Yep. Thank you. I'll that one, too.
You have that one also?
Yes. I would like just a brief question on item five.
Okay. I have three, eight, 10, 11. So we have, so just for the, the staff who are here, the items that we have for pulling are three, five, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. And then 16 is, would be continued.
And, I'm sorry, nine and, nine and 16 are the ones that were...
Nine has an amendment, and six, six...
And nine and 16 is getting continued.
Continued, yes. Uh, oh, three.
You have three.
Yeah. Um, city attorney, I have a question on this item in a, in a, in a, the context of a litigation matter.
Do you want to have this continued?
Um, uh, why don't we pull it off consent, and hold on the agenda for, for now. At some point, we'll take a break. Um, I, maybe I can just ask you a direct question, um, and then determine whether or not we need to have a further, further council conversation about the matter.
All right.
Okay. Okay. Uh, item five is consideration of information regarding the consolidated Yolo County redevelopment successor agency oversight board.
Yes, it's just a quick question, because I was, this is a timeline, because I know we need to get to, at some point, the, the consolidated Yolo Board. Um, and it doesn't articulate, I know you're asking us the possible composition and, but the timeline that I know the, the council will need to make, there need to be recommendations from...
So we could, yeah, you, right now, there's, there's, uh, no specific deadline, other than the July 1st deadline that the consolidated board needs to be in place. Um, the council, yeah, the county's also going through a process, sending letters out to some of the taxing entities, uh, to request their feedback on whether they want to participate. So I think we, we would probably want to get back to, uh, to the county in about 60 days.
All right. All right. I just want to make sure that.
It's also my understanding, isn't the City Selection Committee convening?
Yes. Yeah, the City Selection is, is committee is convening for the purpose of, that committee makes a direct appointment, correct? Or is that, or does the county make the appointment subject to a nomination from the City Selection Committee?
Yeah. We, we did have a meeting in November that was, was kind of the City Selection Committee and everybody from the, you know, who was in the room representing the other cities.
Oh, I think you might be, so the City Selection Committee is a specific creature of state law that is composed of, it's composed exclusively of the mayors of the five, of the four cities?
Oh, then, then that's a different committee. Apologize.
Yeah. But so, so under the, under the statute, that committee makes a direct appointment? It's not a nomination to the Board of Supervisors or?
You know, Mayor, I don't have an answer to that question right now.
And I think that's all I'm trying to make sure we get coordinated on this as July seems far away. Just I know every, all the committees will have to get together and figure this out. So that was the purpose of me bringing it off, what's the timeline and how this is going to lay out.
Could we bring this back then?
Bring it back March 21? I mean, is there any deadline other than the discussion among the City Selection Committee?
Well, the, the City Selection Committee meeting will, will be, one member will be appointed at that meeting. We, the, the chancellor of the committee colleges is not waiting, won't be waiting for, for us. So it seems like the only, I mean, if, if we wanted to recommend any public members to the Board of Supervisors, we could, we could do so. But we could also do that individually. And then the, the Recognized Employee Organization, you know, we ought to be, we ought to be nominating or proposing the current member of our board since we're the, we're the, we're the jurisdiction with the largest number of former redevelopment employees, correct?
Correct.
And she, and she's been outstanding.
Yes.
So I don't know if we did.
I wanted some discussion around that, what the process was, timeline. So, okay. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Eleven, we're coming to that. So, okay. Item eight is consideration of approval agreement with Labass Projects for an arts implementation plan funded by the NEA grant. So, hi, Katie. My only question is, these are, these are funds fully appropriated already, so?
Correct.
We know the president yesterday proposed again the elimination, entire elimination of the NEA. That would not be affected?
No, these were appropriated in 2015, so I believe they're safe, but I can.
No, no, that's fine. Okay, that's, great. That's it. Item nine is consideration of contract amendment number one with AECOM for Civil Engineering Services in the Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan. Does somebody have? Oh, I did, actually.
You did, yeah.
So, Aaron, so at the, when we, when we took this, this up in workshop form before with, with, with Katie and Jason, it's the same item, right?
It's a, it's sort of a follow-up to that. There are parts of it that are following up on that, yes.
Okay, so the, and which is noted here that we directed staff to modify the mobility network. This was a fairly wide-ranging discussion where at the end we were relying upon y'all to summarize and get that. I was hoping that, and maybe, since if it's the basis for what AECOM is going to be doing, that we're, that we will see, we will see it before it's, you know, you're often in executing on it.
Sure. So, so the plan, may I just expand on the plan going forward for the master plan? We actually, we believe we have a little bit longer than we originally thought to, to get the plan done to meet the requirements of our grant. So what we'll be doing is, we don't know exactly how it's going to roll out yet, but potentially more than one workshop to allow the council to have more, more pieces to digest. So it's a very complicated plan, obviously. So we could focus in on the follow-up to the last workshop regarding the mobility network at one of those subsequent workshops. So there would still be time if there was additional input the council had to make changes before we bring back the final plan. So this is just following up on some of the comments we received and, and filling in some of the gaps on the contract that we have to address those items. But yes, we'll be, we'll be coming back with more detail.
Okay, great. For me, at least, it would be helpful, this is one of those items where it'd be helpful for, to come back with a council raised a question about this, this street and here's what we did or didn't do. The council raised an issue about this alignment of this bike trailer, so that we're, it's clear. You know, at the end of that meeting, you know, Katie, Katie and you were both signaling, Kate, yeah, we got it, but I don't think we were entirely sure what was, what was to be had in that. At the end of the conversation, it was fairly wide-ranging. So it's, and it's so important in terms of the future of that district and everything around it. And when you go to public workshops and that sort of thing later and later on in the process, we will want to be sure that we're, we're aware of what's in that first, in that first round.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Terrific. Thank you. All right. Item 10 is consideration of resolution 18, never mind, we dealt with that in Port Commission. So item 11 is consideration an award of contract to PBM Construction for the community facility district sidewalk repair. We have a request for public comment on this item. So this would be your time, Mr. Castorina, finally.
See, I do have patience. Mr. Mayor, council, I just, when I came in here, I read that Parks and Rec was doing, going to do work on the sidewalks. And I didn't know if you guys were aware, but on the south side of Bright Park, there are a few areas, pretty large areas that are broken up. It's a matter of pride and safety that they work on this and, and get it fixed. It's a lot of the kids go in there to play. You got football, you've got, you know, baseball, soccer. They all come in in that area, especially baseball and in that particular area. And I think it's something that should be addressed. If this is, if there's money going to be spent for sidewalks, that should have some consideration. The other thing I would like to say is that I am so happy to see that Bright Park is, where the children Disney build, is turned out really good. Although it was many years in happening, it happened. And our council was there to a man working on that. So we had an investment in that, too. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Zaroski, just to that, to that issue. So these are, these are sidewalk repairs for, for which community facility districts?
They're actually for the CFD in Newport, Bridgeway Island, and Pirella CFD.
Okay. So what might be helpful, because I, I still don't see that anywhere in here.
Yeah, it just says community facility.
Yeah, in a very general way. So you wouldn't know, and obviously, Mr. Castorina was reading, but even I wasn't sure where in the city. So these are, these are sidewalk repairs in those specific neighborhoods and they're funded by the assessments, the mellowest assessments essentially on properties in those, in those neighborhoods. They're not available for us to spend in other neighborhoods, in other places in the city.
That's correct.
Correct. And there is no community facilities. Bright predates the community facilities district law by roughly a century. So there, we don't have, there's no special taxes in Bright to pay for sidewalk repairs in the same way that there are in a couple of other neighborhoods.
Correct.
If I may, just, just if, if we're not aware of those sidewalk issues, if we can?
Yeah, I'll inspect it.
Yeah. And, and whatever upcoming repairs we have, either through, I know we have some street repairs coming through Measure E. We have other types of things we can find. Again, he's raised a concern and I don't know if it's already on somebody's radar screen or kind of some, in someone's plan, but.
Yeah, when we were doing construction out there, we replaced quite a bit of panels that we saw broken. So maybe there's some more that we didn't see. So I'll take a look.
Thank you. Chris, just wanted to think that, I didn't see, there's no estimate, like what you, for a typical public works project, in the other department, what we would see is an engineer's estimate. So that when we're looking at these bids?
Okay.
We can see, okay, but the engineer, you know, an objective engineer on our team said, no, no, there was, it was, it should cost you 25K. And all the bids, so we're looking, this is the lowest bid. What if the lowest bid is still five times more than it should be, then we want to go back out again. So it'd be helpful to just, not down to the penny, but just to have.
All right. Yeah, my engineer's estimate on this was $93,305. I did not put that in the report, but.
Okay.
Wasn't far off.
That's pretty good. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Item 12, it's consideration of fourth quarter report on 21st century policing. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment how much I appreciate these reports. I know it's a lot of work to pull it together for us, but it's really helpful. And in particular, I want to commend the department on the use of the ComStat data to proactively take care of issues. I know, working and working with different folks to come up with solutions, that signal light at Park and Jefferson for one, I mean, that's, that's one that, actually using the data to see like this is a problem area and we need to fix it. And then you, then it got fixed. It just, that's just one example of the use that I, I just wanted to call out. And I'm grateful for the, for the work on that.
Yeah, that, that process actually in ComStat really helped bring that to light and then led immediately to, to the leverage that we have with the relationships with not only our city departments, but Caltrans in that case.
And I wanted to highlight this as well, because this is always, we get this, these reports, for all the reasons Councilmember Sandin just brought up. It is good for the community to see the progress you made, notably in the decrease in crime you're able to, to document here, which I think is important for everybody to see and know over the three year period. But the other things you're doing, I know you highlight the Kalia accreditation we received late last year, at the end of last year, which was terrific, but recognizing the work you done in community policing and youth outreach, the things you do to make sure you're out in the community is, this is your area to kind of bring all that to be transparent and available to the public and how it's all contributing to the community. So I just want to thank you for all this work, you and the chief, because it's important work and see the breadth of it. And in addition to bring into light, you know, some of the racial breakdowns of arrests, those are important things, too, that we need to sort of monitor. And so it's, this is always at the start of a tough conversation, like how much, but we need to see it and we need to be, understand it in the context of all the other things you have going on. So again, I always appreciate you passing this along.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I am constantly speaking praise of the West Hack Police Department. And having attended a ComStat meeting in the past and seeing how you disseminate the information is very impressive. And I appreciate, like my colleagues, the efforts that you put into compiling this information for our review. About a week and a half ago, I had an unexpected and unfortunate opportunity, have to call 911 on behalf of a, of a citizen who accidentally ran herself over. She put her car in reverse and, and had one foot out of, outside of the car and the car ran over her. And I, I called and received an immediate response from several units. And our, our police and fire were just absolutely impressive in their response rate. Luckily, the, the victim of that incident, it came out just fine. But under circumstances that were different, I'm sure the response time would have made an incredible impact on her recovery and/or the treatment that she would have received. So thank you for not only all the work that you put in before the council, but also for our community.
Well, definitely. On behalf of the chief and, and all the men and women that serve the city through our department, we thank you for, for calling out this praise. Really appreciate it.
Our fire chief, too.
And our great partners.
I have a specific question. So all the, all the figures are in the right direction. They're all turning properly. What, the one I wanted to, to just query you about that was the quarter by quarter totals in the violent crime category. So the, the total over, over the, over the year as, as it was the year also, is a 25% decline over two years in violent crime. But you note, at least in the report, that in 2017, each of the quarters, the violent, violent crime numbers increased. Is that, is that an unusual pattern?
I can't, I couldn't speak to it being unusual when, looking over prior years. It's definitely something that we're looking at and we took note. I mean, the difference between the first quarter and the, and the last, where 16 incidents, which looking at that on a percentage basis is significant across the year. And it's something that we're looking at, you know, having two years in a row of, of crime being down, frankly, property violent overall is, is great, but we know we can't rest on our laurels. And so there, there's definitely progress to be made and really frankly, more analysis to be done to see what the drivers are of that.
Right. Even the best NBA players, they're still subject to regression to the mean. So it's, it's, it's not unexpected to see some of the numbers slightly turn, turn back. That's just, that's a fact of life and statistics. But, so I'm glad you're taking a look at it. It wasn't, not worrying because the rest of the report, both in terms of crime outcome, the crime itself, but also, you know, what I, what, we don't, it's not widely read, this, you know, this report in the community. I wish it was, because we are paying attention very closely to some of the issues around equity in, in policing and social justice in policing that have, you know, kind of swept the country. And these reports, you know, they don't always tell the, you know, the story that, that you would want. That's, that's true in, that's true in finance and public works, too. But, but they're incredibly transparent and detailed and useful to folks who want to hold you and us accountable. But what they will find, what folks will find if they actually do open up item 12 of our agenda and read, read these numbers, in addition to, you know, a high level of transparency is, is, they should just take comfort and reassurance in, in the, in the equitable community policing that is practiced in this community. And that what you, what is, what you see on, on TV or in stories or in, or in, you know, sensationalized issues from other places, isn't the case here. And that we have a department that, you know, on every measure, they, they should be proud of and can be proud of and don't have to worry and wonder about it. They can, they can check. They don't have to take our word for it either. They can look at the numbers. They can see what's actually happening. They can come to coffee with a cop and everything else and also, you know, have the human conversation. But they, but if, if, you know, anyone in the public who has not had the, has not had the opportunity to look at item 12 on our agenda, you should know the numbers bear out what we already know, which is that the West Sacramento Police Department is doing a solid job at protecting public safety, but also doing so in a way that, that is equitable across our community. And we appreciate that.
And actually, if I could add to your point, the chief has said it, so I'm going to, I'm going to parrot him. We don't want people to just have faith in taking our word for it. We, we invite them to look at these numbers. And frankly, the fact that we are looking at these numbers, I hope reassures the public that we're hoping to catch any anomaly first and actually work to address it. The oversight of, of how we do our business is very, very important to us.
All right. Thank you. All right. That is, that concludes our exhaustive review of the consent agenda. So if, if there are no other questions or comments on consent, we have items three through 16, but the motion on 16 would be a motion to continue to the March meeting. And the motion on nine would be as modified by the city manager's memo.
I think you asked to pull three. Sorry, it'll be four to 16 with those. And I'll make that motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Sandin, seconded by Councilmember Roscoe. Sign no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing, none. Motion carries. So item 18, it'll be a brief one. Item 18 is public hearing consideration of resolution 18-8 amending the book of fees for various regulatory activities, products, and services. And staff is recommending that we open the public hearing and then continue to March 21st after taking the comments. So, Natish?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, today we are requesting the city council to open the public hearing and continue the public hearing to March 21st. This will give staff sufficient time to present the item to various stakeholders for their comments, including the Chamber of Commerce and various commission, for example, Parks and Recreation Commission for Rec Center Fees. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Natish. The mayor's going to take a quick break, so I'll preside for the moment. Any questions at this point of staff? Okay, you are directing us to open a public hearing, correct? So at this point, I will open the public hearing, ask if anybody from the public would like to address this item. And then I don't see any. So what I, I'm not going to close it. I'm going to continue?
Yes, continue.
Okay. So I'd ask council to make a motion to continue this item?
Yes.
A motion? A motion? And the second, to continue this, do we have a date certain, I'm sorry?
Uh, March twenty-first.
March twenty-first, thank you. So we'll continue to March twenty-first. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, have your continuance. I'm gonna ask that we, I know the mayor's in conference, and the, the council chooses, I think we'll continue on, so we'll move on to item nineteen, which is consideration of works up on the universal preschool component of the West Sacramento Home Run. Ian, I hope you're feeling better?
I certainly am.
Good, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Good evening, council. My name is Ian Winrock, and I'm the program manager for the West Sacramento Home Run Initiative. Tonight, staff is presenting a five-slide workshop seeking policy direction on potential concept definitions and key performing, key performance indicators for the universal preschool component of the West Sacramento Home Run. Next slide, please. Nope, that's perfect. While the Early Learning Services Division of the Parks and Recreation Department currently functions as a three-tiered system of early childhood support services for the community, staff is only asking for council input on the definition and key performance indicators pertaining to the preschool high-quality component, universal preschool for West Sacramento or Up for West SAC, or, excuse me, UP for West SAC, which is part of the first base of the Home Run Initiative. Up for West SAC has been and continues to provide support, training, and resources to preschools throughout the city. In interest of time, I will not read through each of the policy definitions, but I will note that the current proposed definition of high-quality preschool is consistent with the definition of high-quality preschool used by Up for West SAC. Next slide, please. Staff is, however, recommending that two domains of the QRIS, or Quality Rating Improvement System, to determine high-quality preschools not be included, to determine certified preschools for the West Sacramento Home Run. Ratios and group sizes and director qualifications are both excluded from the previous slide. Studies using QRIS have shown that these factors are not as impactful on child outcomes as the first five. The QRIS does not rate those domains for family childcare homes due to a difference in the licensing requirements for these providers, and this would simplify our rating system. Staff has utilized family childcare homes as well as licensed centers from the outset of the Up for West SAC program, because these centers are neighborhood-based, they're often preferred by families. The inclusion of family childcare homes to deliver high-quality preschool is critical for West Sacramento in order to provide enough high-quality preschool spaces, and utilizing a, rather creating a system that will include them makes the most sense. Next slide, please. In order to provide a quick snapshot on preschool providers in West Sacramento, as well as the number of slots, staff has compiled the following data on current numbers of four-year-olds, as well as provided some information on who is included in the mixed delivery system, which is the two city-run preschool centers, Head Start, state preschools, private preschools, as well as family childcare homes, as I mentioned earlier. And current, current available slots for preschools that are high-quality in West Sacramento serve approximately seventy-nine to ninety percent of all eligible four-year-olds citywide. Next slide, please. Lastly, these are the KPIs proposed for the universal preschool component for the West Sacramento Home Run, and either myself, Early Learning Services Director Justine Jimenez, or Parks and Recreation Director Cindy Tuttle are available for questions. Thank you.
All right, are there questions? Thank you, Mayor Protemba Desma, for chairing.
I'm all for, I'm all for simplifying anything we can simplify. I just have a question, if we, if we don't include these, are they, will we ever have a, will we still collect those data when we can, and would we ever have a need for them if we were applying for some, a grant or anything else? I just, I just want to make sure if we, if we take them out, that we don't need them later for some reason.
I'm gonna defer to Early Learning Services Director Justine Jimenez.
Thank you so much for your question, and you're referring specifically to the program director requirements and then the ratios.
Right.
Absolutely, we will be collecting those. We're very familiar with the majority of the centers, family childcare homes, et cetera, that we work with, and so we do have those items on the matrix. We're simply proposing that we remove them to simplify the system, as well as because we don't see that those move the, the, the meter very much in terms of child outcomes, and so it seems to be a good idea to remove them.
Makes sense to me.
Sorry, Justine, so you're saying director qualifications, not necessarily one of the domains, but teacher qualifications will remain?
Absolutely, yes.
And as far as group sizes, it's not necessarily the group size, but the one-on-one, or the interaction between the instructor and the child that is of more importance?
Yes, for instance, at Learning Ladder Preschool, we, we use a one-to-eight ratio for, for teachers to children. We do recognize the fact that, and, and that's used as well at the state preschools. Head Start is slightly different, it's one to ten, and we do recognize that for the majority of private centers, there's no way that they can reach that goal of one to eight without, and still be able to make a profit. So they would, they, that would be something they would not be able to reach, and also because of studies showing that that is not as key of a performance indicator, we do feel that, that that would be, it would simplify the system to remove that as one of the requirements. But the requirements for teachers would still be the same, the requirements for the high levels of interaction between teachers and children, so the class, for instance, which is a classroom assessment scoring system, which looks very carefully at the interaction between teachers and children, and making sure that there's high-quality instruction going on, that would still be there. So if there was, for some reason, you saw that there was a lack of that happening because of a, of a difference in the ratio, that would be measured by that tool. That would still be part of the, of the performance indicators.
When we talk about teacher qualifications, there are some centers that are operated by, say, one main owner or the operator of the daycare, may that be the director or someone otherwise, but perhaps they have assistants or other people that assist with the children. When we talk about qualifications, are they supposed to, are all the folks that are interacting with the children supposed to have the same qualifications, or may they differ?
They may differ, but we do take all of those into consideration. So the score is based on, on all of them, it's not just based on who the quote-unquote "lead teacher" would be in the classroom.
Okay.
So they're all taken into consideration.
And looking at attachment one, I see that there are two would appear to be in-home or, how do you say, family care, family childcare homes? And those are the only two in West Sacramento that have met the criteria according to the domain?
At this time, we expect by the end of this year that there will be more. Part of it is because, in terms of working with family childcare homes that provide a preschool program, and they specifically choose to, you know, market themselves and say, "We provide preschool," those are two that have agreed to be rated. And so in other words, we've been able to have our early learning specialists go in and look at the teacher qualifications, look at, at all the pieces of the matrix, and give them a rating. There's no reason why the, the many others that we work with, I think up to about, well, there's about twenty-five that we're working with currently, but not all of them have a, a preschool program as part of, and, and there's a lot more that will be, will become rated.
Akin to the motel inspection program, will it be some type of badge or something they can hang in the window that says "high quality," you know?
Thank you for asking that question, that's a wonderful.
A different badge.
A different badge, exactly. Yes, it will look different. We, we currently, through the first five funded program, which is called IMPACT or the Quality Counts Program, we do have a, a sign that will hang in each, or go into the lobby, or hang in the window of each center that we work with or family childcare home, saying that they participate in the program. Ian and I will be working and looking together to see how we can sort of brand, once we have the brand through Honey Agency, that we will have a way to sort of recognize this is a first, this is an Up for West SAC qualified preschool and, and is participating in the West Sacramento Home Run.
And of the twenty-five that you're working with, to achieve that goal, what resources will be dedicated towards getting them to that level?
That's, it's really, each, each family childcare home that we go into is really a unique opportunity to, I mean, there, it would be hard to say exactly what, sometimes what's needed is really just some coaching. It's, you know, we may have this, a situation where the, the curriculum is in place, we have highly-trained staff, we have staff, you know, and again, when you're talking in family childcare home, usually you're, you are talking about a, a director, owner, and lead teacher, all in one person, and then maybe an assistant or two that, that he or she may employ. So it may just be something where they need three hundred dollars to, to get materials and supplies so that they have all the needed pieces for their science center and their, all the different pieces that are needed for a high-quality center, or high-quality curriculum to be implemented. And then in other cases, it might be a lot more than that, it might be that that, that person needs to take some professional development, possibly some courses at Los Rios here to further their education and get, and, you know, have a couple of years of coaching before they get to that high level of quality.
I imagine that that would probably involve some type of investment by the directors or coordinators of those facilities. Is there some recognition other than, like, for example, on marketing materials through Up for West SAC, or that, that will tell the community, these are the specified locations where you're going to find high quality? Because I imagine that that would be their draw.
That would be the idea, is that we would link those on the website, and, and I'm not sure how exactly that will look through the West Sacramento Home Run, but it would be, there would be links to each of, these are all the, the certified high-quality preschools that are within the city, so it would be something that would be a marketing tool for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Again, to Councilmember Roscoe's point, as with previous council direction, as part of the Honey Agency and KP Public Affairs marketing and branding portfolio for the Home Run, we've discussed this issue intimately around how can we increase the number of preschool providers, certified preschool providers? And one of the concepts for kind of front-of-house branding is similar to the Slow Food International Snail of Approval, something which would be instantly recognizable brand, that would bring awareness consistent with a greater West Sacramento Home Run brand, so that families would be able to understand which centers are determined high-quality, which would be concurrent with our printed branding materials, as well as the website, which would have a navigation system for centers that might want to become high-quality, so they would be navigated to the page, would, which would allow them to understand, this is what one would need to do to achieve high-quality status with the city, or if you're a first-time parent, this is the map of current providers, and this is what your onboarding experience would be like, so that individual users that are interfacing with the Home Run would have an appropriate point of entry.
And explain to me one more time, Ian, the relationship between a child who participates in a early childhood program that's not high-quality, how does that hinder or affect their participation in the West SAC Home Run, if at all?
So it doesn't preclude you from participating in any of the other bases, for instance. However, if you do participate in a city-certified, high-quality, early learning program through one of our preschool providers in the mixed delivery system, that would guarantee you, once you graduate from that program and enter a Washington Unified kindergarten, the fifty-dollar college savings account. However, if you do not participate in high-quality preschool, you're still eligible for paid internships if you're in a certified career pathway in Washington Unified, or you can still apply for any of the digital badge experiences. One, even if you don't go to a universal preschool, could still apply for the West Sacramento College Promise, for instance. So not being a part of first base doesn't mean that you can't be a part of second or third.
Except for the college savings account?
That's correct, and what we're aspiring to do is to nudge families to, to look at high-quality early learning, whether it's at a state preschool, or a Head Start, or a private preschool center, or one of the two operated by the city, as the best chance for your child to succeed in college and career.
However, if the opportunities are only the ones they are located on attachment one, and other folks aren't necessarily aware of their options, or maybe can't afford the option, I mean, are we limiting their, their access to better outcomes in the future?
I would say.
I was gonna raise this in a different way, because I, and I think when we started the Home Run piece, this, I know for me, I forecast this is gonna be the, at every element of the Home Run, this is gonna be a debate that we have pretty intensely, about whether we're creating a system, or whether we're creating a set of individual entitlements that are all independent of one another. And then if, my, my own point of view and what's, what's the structure of the Home Run is that it's a system, because the end, the end result that we're driving towards is, is a young person being ready for, for a prosperous career and a, and a, and a healthy citizenship and, and all of that, so, and all of those things build upon one another. And we have to send, a lot of these are decisions that both young people, and at this age, certainly parents, are making, and so the signals have to, a single signal alone is not enough, they all have to reinforce. But in this point, this point around availability, because you, you know that the, I think in the staff report, you may have said it also in the beginning of the oral, in the oral report, is that there's, we have, with this mix, we'd have available slots for seventy-nine, or, for six-hundred-and-seventy-two slots out of seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred-and-fifty-four year-olds. And so I could see personally distinguishing between the, the, the QRIS rating that's required for city support of the preschool through the Up for West SAC program, being potentially a different level than is required for the savings account, as an example, given the balance between universal, the access being available. So we might say, look, until we get to a point where there are, there is a high-quality preschool slot available for every child in the city, which is our goal, and we intend to get there, you know, within eighteen months or whatever, until we get there, we will accept for the college savings account, we will accept a, a three. Right? So, so we're not gonna spend Up for West SAC money on a three, only on a four and a five, or somebody who's almost a four, but for the purposes of the savings account, so that we can assure that everyone can, right? Because we don't want to say, you don't get a college, you tried your best to get preschool, you could not find a high-quality slot, and now the double whammy is, you're, you're not gonna get the college savings account either. So that seems like a way to potentially resolve, you know, solve that issue, because I think it's a really, it's a very, it's the right one, that until we can say, yes, there are eight-hundred-and-fifty high-quality preschool slots available, it's hard to do that. So I, I, I think that might be a way to address that. I personally really appreciate the, what you've done here, because this balance between quality and universality is, is a challenge, and I know it's hard, it's hard for, for, for staff to grapple with as well. I mean, Justine is, you know, a nationwide expert in high-quality preschool, and so, and we, but we're, we're also trying to reach everybody at once, and I know you are as well, and so trying to find this balance, and what are the right research indicators. I'm just very glad that we have the team that we have to do that, to do that, to do that assessment. So the only question I had, that was following up basically on, on this suggestion around potentially a three, is, is there discontinuity in the outcome data? Is like, the difference between a three and a four so enormous that we would be, it would be immoral for us to, to give a college, you know, to, to, to encourage somebody to go to a three if they couldn't find a four?
That's a great question, and I, I don't exactly know the answer, because so much of the data is based completely on, what is it when it's a four and a five? And then what is it when it's absolutely not a four and a five? Reaching, getting towards a four and a five, I would imagine, yes, you're, you're, and I, and I also, that you are getting close to that. And then I also think that what you just said is really key. We do need to continue to strive to get more and more and more of those high-quality qualified spaces, and ones that will be at centers that are affordable enough that families can access them. And I don't think that that's, we're not talking ten years from now, I think we are talking within a couple of years, that's the goal. And so I don't, I think that that would be a good interim to put in place. That sounds right to me, it sounds like the right thing to do for our, for our families in our city, and, you know, obviously, we can talk more about that, but, but that, to me, seems like a good stopgap measure to be put in, because we don't see, we're not gonna say, well, it's a one, you know, this preschool is really terrible, kids clearly aren't gonna come out of it, you know, prepared for, for kindergarten, but, but if they're reaching, trying to achieve, striving for a four or a five, I think that we could go ahead and say, yes, I think these children should also get a savings account for the time being.
Okay.
That makes sense. All right, other comments or questions? Yeah, that's great.
So council is recommending an, an. So council is recommending an addendum to the definition for high-quality preschool that you would only be certified high-quality if you receive a Tier Four or higher rating on QRS. However, for the purposes of the college savings account, a preschool center could still receive a three or higher rating?
Yeah, I think that's the, the workshop, so, you know, but I think that basic idea, and maybe you call that an emerging high-quality center or something, to signal. So, because we do, you know, we want, we do want parents to see that, you know, maybe when you're issuing the motel, or the snail, that, Ian, snails and motels, that's where we're going to put our, Ian's a banana slug, that's why. I mean, you do want parents to know that this, you know, maybe the gold one is the fours and the fives, and a silver city, you know, city stamp of approval is the, is the, is the, you know, the emerging or the almost ones. So, so parents can distinguish, but still have access. Thank you. Great, thank you so much. All right, if we can return then to item three. And I was going to simply ask for a motion, a second, and a vote, but Mr. Shaw, did you want to? I don't think you'd, okay. Okay, all right, so I, the question I had has been answered, I think. So is there a motion on the item?
I'll move the recommended action.
Well, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or turned down, motion carries. Thank you. All right, that brings us then to our, to item 20, right? Yeah, item 20, which is a workshop and follow-up discussion on the Smart City Readiness Event. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening. The purpose of this report is to facilitate a council discussion and some debriefing regarding the Smart City Readiness Workshop that was held here at City Hall yesterday morning, and to solicit the council's feedback on its smart city priorities to inform the development of a smart city strategy to inform your investments in this domain in the future. At the event yesterday, we had about 40 attendees, which included the mayor, council members Johansson and Sandin, several advisory commission members, along with representatives from partner jurisdictions, many members of the executive team, and staff from the city, along with experts in smart cities from the Smart Cities Council, who put on the event in collaboration with us. The purpose of the event was really twofold, so it was divided into two parts. The first half was spent kind of on an educational component, where the Smart Cities Council staff educated us on sort of common definitions around smart cities and best practices worldwide that they see. And then we spent the, the second part of the event broken down into teams, looking at focus areas, and really generating input from the participants about their perspective on how smart cities' investments could benefit residents in West Sacramento. The Smart Cities Council from here is going to use the input that was developed at the workshop and the input that's received tonight to inform a document that they're going to prepare for us, summarizing the workshop and adding some of their insights. And then that report, in turn, will serve as sort of raw material for the council and staff to work through the development of the council's own smart city strategy. And we're planning to have a document of that draft ready, excuse me, draft of that document ready to present to the council in a workshop format in May. So in a moment, I'd like to ask Jennifer James of the Smart Cities Council to come up and present an overview of yesterday's event, along with some of her insights from the event. When her presentation is complete, we'll both be available for questions. And after that, we'd ask the council to conduct a discussion on smart cities and provide any feedback that you might have, so.
So it's, it's been 16, there's no, the final report's not done?
No, they're working really diligently though.
15 hours ago, what have you all been doing?
Yeah, I had the same question.
All right, Jennifer, welcome back.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Really pleased to be here this evening. Wanted to just give a little bit of background about the Smart Cities Council. And we're a member-based coalition of smart cities practitioners. And our mandate is really to accelerate this smart cities movement, to help communities better embrace technology, to achieve their goals. Next slide, please. So we, we had the great opportunity, it was our pleasure, my colleague Adam Beck is here as well, to facilitate a great group of participants, very diverse group of participants that really represented many aspects of the community here in West Sacramento yesterday. And as John mentioned, we started with really an overview of even what is a smart city, to get on the same page, and then really set some foundations to talk about what are the priorities for West Sacramento specifically. Very simply, the Smart Cities Council defines a smart city as one that uses technology and data to improve the livability, the workability, and the sustainability of the community. And a big aspect of that, but certainly not the only aspect of that, but one, is being able to leverage data, being able to collect data from multiple sources and multiple types, being able to, to communicate that data, and being able to analyze it, so you get new insights, and city systems can better work together, be more efficient. And please advance the slide as well. To, to focus on benefits, so it's not just about technology, but really looking at how technology can be used to achieve goals, whether that be from your specific sustainability mandates, whether it be relating to economic development, job creation, improving efficiency, and improving community services that are provided by the city. And ultimately, coming down to the well-being of the people within the city of West Sacramento, and looking at ways technology and data can help achieve those ends. Next slide, please. The Smart City Journey is one that the West Sacramento has been on for a while, in fact, and well before this workshop. But the workshop was a way to start to cement some of those concepts and bring in some new ones, and to look at ways that a lot of these individual programs that have been taking place in, in the different departments can start to come together into a more kind of cohesive and integrated program. So we, we went through the workshop stages yesterday, as John mentioned, and the insights we gained will feed into the preparation of a document, which John will then turn into, with the, with your input and the input of many members of the community, turn into a program, a smart city strategy. One thing that we're very aware of is, this is all not just about planning, this is about actually implementing programs, implementing things and learning by implementing programs. So one thing that we want to stress, and we certainly talked a lot about in the workshop yesterday, is the iterative nature of a smart cities program. It's something that, that you're, you're getting insights constantly, you're coming up with, with ideas, you're seeing how those ideas can help achieve goals, you're implementing programs, and looking at ways those different programs can affect the benefits from, from other programs within the community system. But always adapting through feedback loops, through the different data being collected and input being collected, as well as new opportunities that arise. Next, please. So the workshop, part two of the workshop had a splitting into four groups. We decided in advance, John directed us to, to focus on four areas, since we couldn't cover everything in one day. So built environment, telecommunications, transportation, and public safety were the four areas. We split into different groups. We walked through a process that provided three, what we, we call strategy canvases. One was really about what does, what does smart city mean to West Sacramento within each of those areas? So really trying to focus on what it is that, that the community wishes to accomplish through the use of technology and data. And then we, we went through a target-setting process. So what specifically can the community accomplish? Not just brand-new targets, but relating back to targets that, that the city has already set in its general plan and in other places. So how can technology and data be used to achieve those goals? But then looking within each of those, those segments, and, and saying, what specifically should we be, what specific outcomes are we looking for, and how do we actually measure the progress we make? So we went through that target-setting process, and then went through, which was a really engaging conversation around specific solution concepts to help achieve those goals. And this was a great idea-generating session. A lot of things are already in progress, in fact, but a lot of new ideas came up in each of those areas. Happy to, to discuss that in more detail, answer some questions. Just a couple of notes on some of the insights we gained, a couple of quick notes on some of the insights we gained in each area, or some of the focus areas within each of those sections. And within the built environment, there was a strong focus on energy, and, and what are the ways technology can be used to help reduce the cost, or be more cost-competitive, I should say, from an electricity perspective? But also how to reduce the consumption of energy and water and other resources within buildings in the built environment for efficiencies and cost savings and sustainability benefits. So that were, a lot of the solutions focused on those areas. From a telecommunications perspective, in addition to looking at broadband opportunities and applications, there was a lot of focus on taking stock of all the assets the city already has that can be leveraged for additional connectivity and communications infrastructure within the community. Within the mobility area and transportation area, we focused on looking at multimodal forms of mobility across the community system, ways to provide new optionality to people, and making sure that different people have access and, and choice, but also balancing that against the, the quality of service and the cost of service and, and other needs within the community. And in public safety, we already heard this evening that there's already a lot of great work being done by the police department in collecting and using data to make a real difference. And so there was a focus on how, how do we even go further and look at bringing other sources of data together to go further, make a bigger difference in areas? We looked at, you know, case studies around homelessness, for example, as a, as an area. But also, how can technology be used to improve the confidence and the comfort people feel around the public safety and public spaces, and parks and public spaces within the community? So those are just a few of the, the areas that each of the groups focused on. There are a lot of great insights. We're going to be reporting back on those in the near future. And as John mentioned, that'll feed into a larger strategy. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Member Sandin, did you want to add anything?
Well, I learned a lot yesterday. I was, I was at the, at the session. Thank you for giving us some tools, and also bringing all the folks together here. I think that this process is a, is good for, was good for us. I think we, we like to go fast here. And even in the group, I was in the public safety group with the, the fire chief, and the police chief, and the director of Parks and Recreation. We, they already kind of saw some data gaps where they had data that could help each other, and they, they are, I think, are already going to start working on that now. So as you mentioned, it's iterative. I think we have a lot of possibilities here to do a lot better for the community with, with some of the techniques. And so I'm just excited that, that we're moving forward, and I was glad to be there yesterday.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, this is, and I wasn't able to be there yesterday, and, but I'm watching John and the rest of the staff to sort of move this along. And, and thank you for the presentation, and for John and all your work on this, and Councilmember Sandin, and Councilwoman Johansson, and the mayor for leading it. And I'm, I'm just really kind of curious on, kind of what's, I'm, I'm, I'm just going to fess up. I'm still, it's a little fuzzy to me, what to expect in terms of actionable deliverables that may come out of this, and to where we can point to and say, you know, these are things that are tangible that a resident might see as benefiting them in year one or year two. And, because you talked about, you're going to bring all this and kind of come together with a comprehensive strategy, to how we might go, go, go down these, bring these work streams together, and come out with a comprehensive strategy. And so if you can kind of maybe paint a picture of what other cities have done at this point, and how we, what is it going to take for us as the policymakers, or to kind of keep the momentum going? Other than, you know, how do we make it actionable and, and doable, and so that we can show results from this?
Sure. Now, I appreciate the, the questions and comments. Certainly, that is a question at the top of every city's mind, is how do we actually get to results more quickly? How do we know what we're doing is having an impact? One of the things that we focused on quite a bit yesterday is making sure that we weren't just looking at what is the long-term vision, and, 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 you know, kind of pie in the sky things, but also getting to very specifically what can be done within the next, in the immediate term, in the next six months, and then looking into, you know, the next year and a couple of years into the longer term beyond that. So there were specific solution concepts identified within that six months, immediate term to six-month timeframe, that frankly are already being actioned. One thing that, that the mayor certainly pointed out is, there's, this community doesn't wait for a plan to be completed to take action. I think that that's very wise. That being said, a plan is important to make sure that you're really leveraging all of these different systems, and looking at them in a more integrated way. So I would say that the specific immediate-term solution concepts under each of those categories are going to feed into the, the plan that, document that John presents. And that's something that we'll be producing within the next couple of weeks.
And I think, I thank you, and, and I think I got the concept, and I knew that my colleagues that were there would be pushing for kind of what is those actual plans, and we're not, and certainly not by any means suggesting that, that we should wait or come back to us for approval. But I am interested in maybe this direction for John. How do we translate this when it comes back to what residents? My neighbors who ask, I saw the smart cities thing out of it, you know, what is it? What is, what, you know, being able to translate it from the kind of data-driven, systems-driven, sort of, kind of wonky sort of exercise, to what will, kind of what's the end result? I'm not necessarily interested in kind of getting to results. Like, I know we want to get there. I'm not saying not to. But I'm also being, I need to communicate kind of what we're doing, in very layman's terms, without running into the various techniques and technologies and the, and the approaches we're using. So at some, at some point, you know, as we get to, I want to be able to articulate, this is the transformation we're undergoing. This is kind of being able to, from a use case, almost scenario, from a user perspective, like as a city resident. This is how are you going to benefit? And it may take you, may take two years, but for me, that, that's kind of what I'm looking for. And, and I'm certainly not, I hope doesn't derail what you're saying. It's just a way to interpret what you're doing, more than anything, that I think that I'm going to be able to sort of, that I would be looking for. And I want it to be actionable. I want you to go forward, and we have great brains in the city. And I saw some of the tweets and posts yesterday that, we had people that came in that were like, I don't know, were in their city, and came and helped deliver messaging around this. But, but for the rest of folks who are just, you know, like, you know, they want to know what this is about too, how can I translate that, say, this is something you may be able to see in a year and a half? I'm working on it now. And what's the, kind of from, you know, they could feel city services better in their community by having, you know, compost waste pickups now as part of our, right? As part of city government. That's a tangible thing we do. How does this help them in their livelihood? And I'm sure there's ways and things are working that, but that would be something I'm, kind of what I'm steering towards. It's more communication and interpretation, that we can translate that to be something tangible for the community. That's my only comment.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Ldez was raising all the, all the key and right points, some of which we raised yesterday, but, but not, and not as clearly as you just did, in, in a lot of ways. Do you think, in terms of the direct outcomes, the, like, in Measure E, the, just looking at the language, looking at the languages that are having in my wallet, but the smart technologies piece, I think, is in part covering the, it's not just the smart cities work specifically, because I think it's smart technologies in which we wrapped in civic engagement, age-friendly mobility, that's all as part of that. And we do have, in terms of VIA, in terms of the volunteerism project that we're, that John is working with our, with our new startup-in-residence outfit, and with what we're doing on Zen City, on civic engagement. We already actually have live projects underway in that, in that domain. At the same time, a lot of the, and we pushed on this yesterday somewhat too, I think a lot of the smart city work requires some, some connective tissue between the departments. So I'm a big fan of just going out and trying some things. At the same time, while we're doing that, we do need to be thinking, okay, if Public Works, you know, decides to, they've got a great, a great deal to do a project where, you know, the streetlights are going to now have this technology in them. And that technology relies on, you know, a particular, a particular Internet of Things, you know, standard. And, and that looks great, and we do that- And that looks great and we do that. And then when Parks wants to do something in the park that we've talked about before, using IoT to be able to get a better sense of what people actually, what facilities and stuff they're actually using in parks, and that's a different IoT standard, a more different networking technology or whatever. We've not, we've not thought in advance about some of those, some of those interdepartmental issues that can be a framework. So we can discover the need for the framework as we're going along, but we do need to work on the framework at the same time as we're experimenting and testing and iterating and taking advantage of things like Zen City, which was an example of some, of an outfit that was willing to do, basically charged us almost nothing in order for us to be their test bed. But we had to look at that first also and say, okay, are we making, are we deciding things for other departments or for other, for broader smart city infrastructure with this project? Because if so, we need to maybe slow it down. But in that one, we determined, no, it's perfectly reversible. We're not setting anything up that will, that will make choices for us later, so we can, we can move quickly in that. So in addition to being about the domains that you described in terms of mobility and built environment, whatever, it is that, but it's not just about the issues, it's also about the kind of the infrastructure web, the network web of the smart city infrastructure as a whole. Because it's, its strength comes from its ability to connect, not just from whiz-bang technologies that are independent of one another in the different departments. So I'm hoping that that's a big part of what emerges, is giving us the discipline to think about that in a, in a policy area, you know, agnostic way in order to, and that won't, that part of it will not be, will not be useful to communicate any more than we communicate, hey, you know, look what we've done on driving down healthcare insurance premiums for the city or whatever. We don't have to communicate everything, but we do need to be able to draw the line to, the lines to things like improved engagement or mobility or age-friendliness or what have you. So I think that's exactly the right point. And I think Adam yesterday said, you know, in our workshop, you know, at the beginning, folks are being asked to define smart cities. Look, we have, I've been to places where, you know, you get to, and you go around and people have, you know, one definition, and then it goes around again, then it goes around again, and it goes around again and again and again until somebody says the word "people", which I think we successfully said the word "people" in round two, at the early stages of round two, but some take many, many rounds to get there. And it's exactly the right thing, it's exactly the right point, that keeping people at the center of that planning process is critical. So that was really useful. I'm eagerly anticipating, while at the same time hoping departments will be on the, you know, will be continuing to look for opportunities, that both to deploy now, but also in the thinking of the opportunities and the evaluating of the opportunities, it will, it will make the framework that we're developing better in a way that can't be today.
I guess I have an elementary question, really. In the discussion regarding public safety and use of technology, how do the conversations normally, or at least the one from yesterday, what does it revolve around? I mean, I could imagine some situations like data collection, but, I mean, what about, and has this ever popped up or did it pop up yesterday where, you know, we have ways for our community to very easily access the attention of law enforcement, something short of an emergency, short of an actual crime, but maybe like suspicious activity, something that's, you know, happening immediately? I mean, a lot of people don't know the number to pick up, to call, you know, the police or to make reports, but they know how to text or they know how to use apps. I mean, do we have something? That's a million questions, by the way, but, just for my own application and like, Mayor Portem, to go out there and educate the community as to what we're talking about here. You know, what was the conversation revolving around then and also?
Well, Councilmember Sandin was in that group.
I was in that group. And Mr. Robinson also was, the fire chief and Parks and Rec director were as well, that are folks that are here today. We talked about, yesterday, we talked, focused on not the whole universe. We were trying to look at some examples of things where we could talk about possible data projects or collaborations and so forth. So we talked about homeless services. We talked about reducing public fear. And then I have, I did find my notes, by the way, taking advantage of data. The data sets that are already in existence and actually interconnecting them, because sometimes there are barriers, because you're just doing what you need to do for one part of a, one service, but the information from that could actually help solve a problem in a, in a different area if you could connect the dots. So we're talking about that yesterday. So that could come up, what you just shared could come up as a kind of problem statement. And then through, through efforts, could, we could talk about how we could do things, how departments or how the staff here could maybe focus on a problem statement and get to a solution.
One of the, I know one of the elements of it that got discussed in the broader group afterwards that you guys prompted was using predictive analytics to improve our ability to prevent homelessness. So which, you know, is a, which police departments and social services units are attempting to do better and better and better at that. But, you know, around the country, including ours. But we don't really have the mechanisms for, in place today, or the technologies or the data systems to be able to take and to do that very well. And so, you know, one of the examples we talked about, okay, well, what if, you know, what if we were able to directly connect utility bill payments with the police department so they could be able to see, you know, if we were to do the, if we were to do the analytics and see, okay, is, does missing two months in a row of utility bills when you've never missed one ever before, is that a predictor? If we connect the data that the utility, the finance department has with what, you know, the police department has and/or county social services or others, are, can we find, or the superintendent of schools was with us all day yesterday, if a child is truant unexpectedly for, you know, repeatedly and never was before, is that a, so the ability to look at even data that we already have, but that we're not connecting in any serious way, to be able to improve the quality and efficiency, the effectiveness of the services that we are providing, get smarter about them. That may not be something that, you know, we're loudly proclaiming in the city, hey, we're watching your utility bills to see if you're, if you're missing a whole bunch at a time. It's not really necessarily always about citizen service, it's the, you know, direct service to the citizen, but it is about doing a much better job of the things that really matter. So if that, so it's, it was an example, I mean, we didn't, there's no technology that I know of that is about that specifically, but it was the kind of, the kind of use of data in a way that might, might be able to leverage outcomes that we already have, that we already have. We just don't have, we have never deployed them together. So those are some of the examples of what was discussed yesterday.
Thank you.
On exploratory basis.
I love that kind of thinking. And it's like, I had not thought about that kind of application, so, I'm sorry.
I just applaud that sort of, that's how the conversations went throughout and that it's, that's easy to communicate and how that can translate to, back to the point. And just as we get to that point, I mean, I could nerd out in that too, that kind of stuff. But, but it sounds like there's a lot of good minds thinking that way. That's really encouraging to me. It's a hard thing to translate, what does that mean, smart cities, to people that voted for it and smart technologies? It's, you know, we made, we're making an investment in that and I'd do it again in a heartbeat. And I just want to applaud the work that's being done and the sooner we can sort of talk, tout some of the things we're thinking about and where we're going, it's terrific.
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam, too. All right then, that brings us to council calendar. Ms. Berlin.
Yes, good evening. Happy Valentine's Day to you, mayor and council members. There's an event coming up in March that you might be interested in. It's the Elkhorn Park reopening, and that's at 10:00 a.m. on March 23rd.
Questions on the calendar. Casing Dunn City manager reports?
Well, she, Amanda didn't mention the May 11th Bright Park, so we had a little bit of tease about Bright Park and the shade structure be there. So we'll have an event in May when all the work is done, the restrooms are in place and so on. We'll look for the sidewalk chips as well. But the smart city event yesterday got a lot of attention, but we also, staff would like to thank the council for your efforts on the February 1 and 2 strategic planning session. If you recall, you met earlier this month. And tonight, you approved the strategic plan for 2018. Amanda did a great job on that. We were joined by Roberta there, and I think our team appreciated your focus. And we're off and running in 2018. We do have to make a decision, do we want to take that process that we had this year and repeat it again? Our facilitator from the past years is interested, so I'll talk to the mayor about that. If you have questions or thoughts about next year's event, let the mayor know or let me know, and we have to make a decision on that next few days, but, or next few weeks, anyway. But thank you for your attention on February 1 and 2. We've got great direction and we're off and running.
Question for the city manager to report. City attorney report.
Attorney.
Staff direction from members of the council. And we have no future agenda item requests.
Just before we adjourn, I was just going to thank my colleagues and all of you for here tonight for spending Valentine's Day with us. And I know that Assistant City Manager just mentioned that, but that it's a big contribution of your time away from your family, so thank you.
Yes, very much so. I'm married to the city, so.
I know you are, that's true.
But usually, usually the city has other plans on Valentine's Day, so it's very touching.
Well, I think after my wife's reaction at 5:00 today, I might be soon too, so don't worry.
All right then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. If you adjourned, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turned down, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.